Good evening. Welcome to the April 28, 2014 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Genino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Yep.
Here, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novosolsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of March 31, 2014.
All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, a point of personal privilege. Thank you, Mr. President. I received a call yesterday afternoon from a very dear and loyal friend to all of us and a colleague of ours, Bob Haas. He had an emergency procedure done at Mass General after a... He had gone in the week before for a procedure and it went afoul. One of the things they put in went off into his body and blood was going into his lungs. It was a very serious situation. So he called me just prior to going into the operating room yesterday and obviously he was shaken and I got through the conversation. I was shaken too because Bob and I are like brothers. We're always together and doing things together and everybody knows. And our colleagues appreciate the fact that he works hard for our community. So he wanted me to convey this message to you and telling you with full assurance that he's got all the clearances as of today. I spoke with him that he's going to be fine. He'll be out of the hospital in a few days. But I'll go see him tomorrow and check on him, make sure he's okay. But he just wanted me to tell you that he's fine. Everything's good because my phone was ringing off the hook as other councils have been receiving calls from the many dear friends that Bobby has. And he's a strong part of our community and certainly we all wish and pray for his well-being. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Guanasso. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules so that all of these people that are up here this evening on that particular matter.
Yes, Counselor Powers, I'll ask you to just hold that for a couple of minutes. We're going to just do the first two items on the calendar and then we'll suspend those, if that's okay with you. Okay.
Calendar item number one, joint utility meeting with Comcast, National Grid, and Verizon to discuss double poles and potholes.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Stan Yucivich, Verizon, the offices at 63 High Street in Danvers. We've made, of course, continuous progress over the course of the winter. Since January, we've taken out over 30 poles, which is fairly remarkable considering the weather that we've had. The responsibilities for poles are spread across the board. Engrid has made a tremendous amount of progress. Verizon ourselves, we're down to 21 poles. Comcast around 25, and Fire Alarm has 26. So we anticipate that we'll continue to work throughout the spring and the season to get down to as close to single numbers as we possibly can.
Thank you. Dan?
Mr. President. Dan Cameron, with National Grid, with offices at 170 Metford Street in Malden. And just to continue with the good news, that last month I was here, we're down to 48, which was down from 80 the month before, and now we're down to 36. So we're continuing to make progress.
Fantastic.
Tim Kelly, Comcast, having offices at 426 East First Street, Boston, Massachusetts, 02127. We have 25 poles on the list. I've said this before. If we have a lot of poles in our court, that's a good thing because we can, you know, we can move those fairly quickly, which means that the process is working before us. So this is a good story for the city.
Very pleased, very pleased. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly applaud your efforts. The city's showing the benefits of your hard work and we appreciate that. But, Dan, in front of 307 Revere Street, there's been a light out and I looked for a pole number. There's two poles there. One is stuck in the middle of the other. And the pole number given was some crazy number. I know it's not part of our system, so I don't know what it is. But the address is in front of, across the street from the old Maggio Restaurant.
307?
307 Revere Street. And it's really an illumination that's needed because there's a crosswalk right there. And it's an intersection where a lot of children cross the street at that particular location. There is a convenience store now at that location across from Maggio's. And so that is a very important intersection. And one other thing, well, on a rule, the pole that I requested that they have a streetlight affixed to on American Legion Highway adjacent to Stanton Ave. And the pole number is V as in Victory, Z as in Zebra, 1938. That still hasn't been done. And that's a very dimly lit area. Again, this area is adjacent to the projects on that particular location and there's a lot of activity in that area. And the people in Stanton Ave would really appreciate the fact that it would be well-lit and illuminated so that they can protect their public safety. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to speak on National Grid, but I'd like to ask at this time that the council stand in a moment of silence for retired fighter, fighter Sal Champel, who passed away.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Powers.
Yeah. These matters, I have a couple that are basically for National Grid.
Okay.
And one of them is also for Verizon, and I just gave that to Stan. But I believe National Grid has to come off those poles first before you can touch them.
These are the two that...
On Norman Street.
On Norman Street.
18 and 20 Norman Street.
18. I have 12 and 20 Norman Street.
I'm sorry, 12 and 20, okay.
And we'll have someone inspect them. They're not in the list now, but if they need to be replaced, we'll place them.
They're rotted at the bottom, yeah.
Yeah. So that will end up being in PLM before the end season.
Okay. Now, back to National Grid. You have a trench on Alden Avenue. It's been there for several weeks now. It's a National Grid trench.
Baldwin Ave.
It's on Alden Avenue.
Oh, Alden.
Yeah. And I know the people down there would like to have that repaved. Yeah, it is.
Do you know where it's located?
It's right in the middle. I'm not sure of the number. It's Short Street. It's not that long. You have... I've had a call from people on Goodwin Avenue regarding two poles. The lights are out, 1219 and 2833. And if we could get those poles with the lights up and running, I know the people down there would certainly appreciate it. And then the one other thing I have is 141 Rice Avenue, the transfer of that pole into the next yard. I know, I believe National Grid has to come off the pole first. Is that correct?
Okay, so I hear the new pole's been set, so we...
The pole has been set.
Okay. So we'll transfer it over.
So you transfer it over and then I guess Verizon and Comcast will follow suit. Thank you, Mr. President. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one. Dan, this is for you and I gave it to you a month ago, six months ago, and maybe eight.
Is that Withrow?
Went to... 1043 Went to Pav. The address is the house. The pole number, I believe, is 101.
Yeah, we had a pole 1000 and no one could find it.
Yeah, it's 101. But I know the poor woman that lives right outside the light been writing down. It's on a couple nights, then it's off for three nights. It's on, it's off.
The house number is 1043?
1043, correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Counsel Riordan, he had asked me to mention pole number VZ900 on Fernwood Ave. It's right by the entrance of Walgreens. It's a double pole, so I know he had, I think he had mentioned it last month, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. For National Grid, we're getting the pump stations redone up in North Revere. And I've been made aware that for three weeks now, the DPW had to keep workers there around the clock for waiting to get National Grid, the wire, the pump. Are you aware of this, Dan?
No, these new pump stations?
They're redoing.
Okay. They need service from us?
Well...
Okay.
They're... Yeah, they just, they have to keep somebody there for three weeks now, around the clock, waiting for this to get done. So I would hope that you could kind of hurry the procedure along a little bit so we're paying the overtime and what have you.
Why don't you call me tomorrow if you can?
Yeah, one, actually, one...
Get some locations.
If you... Why don't you talk to the superintendent, Donnie?
Okay, that's fine. Yep, I'll do that.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, welcome and really thank you for all your hard work. You know, I know we have little things going on around the city, but, you know, I know in the last two or three years when we got together on this PLM issue, things have really gelled and it's working out very well. I have five or six items and I talked to Stan already on Beach Street at the corner of Ocean Ave, a pole 390, a double pole 392. It's not on the list, Dan, so...
Is it at Banana Boat?
Banana Boat, right. So, okay, so if we can... I know there's no one attached to it, so hopefully it can be a quick, quick fix. Okay? The second item is that pole 414 at 483 Beach Street. It's on the list twice, once in the VFW Parkway, once on... So we can eliminate one of... I would recommend eliminating the VFW Parkway one because it's right in front of 483 Beach Street, right by the Dunkin' Donuts.
And I think our crew was out earlier this week, so we'll see if that's changed in PLM. I'll contact the foreman tomorrow.
Yeah, one of them should come off anyways. And regarding that, Dan, on that guide wire I sent you on that same location?
Yes. That's going to be taken care of. We're going to move it over.
Okay.
It'll be a sidewalk-type guy.
Any idea when?
I think that they had a call on the dig safe again, so probably the next week or two.
Okay. Sounds good. Double pole with nothing on it, pole 48 in Revere Beach Parkway, again, is something that's been ongoing. It's right at the Revere Beach Park at this intersection of North Shore Road, across the street on the Suffolk Downs side. Yeah. And another guide wire issue, Dan, that I sent to you on Walnut Ave, they put in a new pole there two years ago and they set the catch on the ground for a guide wire and they've never put the guide wire in. So it was for 231 Walnut Ave.
231 Walnut?
231 Walnut. The pole's across the street from that. So either take out, if they're not going to put it in, take out the ground thing because people are going to trip over it. Okay? They had it new installed when they built the building.
It's not the Stan.
Is that a Verizon?
Could have been.
Okay. Dan, at 15 Centennial Ave, gas cap. It's about two or three inches off. It's an old trench on the sidewalk. And the last thing is the new pole at Kimball Ave that I requested should have come through the mayor for a new pole on Kimball Ave.
That's been written up and we'll be getting to that soon.
That's all I ask. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. And thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky. Okay. I gave you a pole a month ago. I have to say I'm disappointed it wasn't taken care of. But it turns out I don't believe it's on the list and maybe that's what happened. It's pole number 884, Verizon pole 884. It's at the end of Hawes on Atwood. It's been there for years, I guess, so needs to be removed.
It's 884?
884. At the end of Hawes and the corner of Atwood, obviously.
No, it's not on the list.
That's all I have and I want to thank you for your cooperation. This is going more smoothly than anybody could have imagined. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, Bob Button of CDM will give a progress report on the Winthrop Ave store project.
Mr. Button.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, thank you for having me. Robert Button, CDM Smith, with offices at 50 Hampshire Street in Cambridge, Mass. I'm also here with my colleague, John Doherty, who was before you just a couple of weeks ago. I had a family emergency and wasn't able to make it that evening. We wanted to give you a quick update. We've made considerable amount of progress since John was here a couple of weeks ago. Just the next morning after John was here, we were able to resolve the issue with the 24-inch water main that was in Winthrop Ave that we put, a new pipe that we put in. The pipe that was installed, new, was tested and fine. There's some issues that the MWRA is going to be dealing with upstream of our work area and that'll be their responsibility to handle. But they were able to pass the test from pressure and chlorination, so we were able to put that back in service. Immediately after that, we began the 16-inch pipe. I was there this afternoon. All the 16-inch pipe is in the ground and the pressure test passed this afternoon. I got that text about 5:30. So we will be working to chlorinate all those pipes, connect them all back together, and backfill the trenches over the balance of this week and be ready for some curbing and sidewalk and trench paving work next week. It looks like we're still on target for the May 9 date that John had mentioned to you and we seem to have quite rapidly turned the corner out at the field, or out at Winthrop Ave.
That's great to have some good news about this project and I think we discussed today that we're going to try to help the Little League out down there. And do you want to elaborate on that or would you...
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for that. We did talk a little bit. The Little League has been trying to get started with their opening day and there's been quite a bit of standing water in the field that we understand has been a problem in the past. We're working with Nick Reistrum, city engineer and the DPW, to come up with a solution that we can implement so that it doesn't continue to flood every spring like this and try to implement a permanent fix for that area. And we're working to help the Little League folks with that now.
I think our friends in the Little League will be very happy to hear that because it's been a problem for many years and if we can give them a permanent solution to that, it's going to be just fantastic.
It may take us a few months to get it implemented, but we are working on it.
Great. Any councils?
Wow.
Okay, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
And it sounds like good news all around.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we'll take up Counselor Powers' motion to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Madam Clerk, you have a communication?
We received a late communication today from attorney James J. Cipolletta regarding 29 Thayer Ave, PUD 14-1. For and on behalf of the applicant, leave is hereby requested to withdraw the application without prejudice with the potential to file a different plan in the future.
On the motion. Roll call, Mr. President. Roll call.
Shall the city council allow the petitioner to withdraw 29 Thayer Ave, PUD 14-01, without prejudice? Counselor Rigo.
No.
No. Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
No.
No. Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
No.
No. Counselor Riordan is absent and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to withdraw without prejudice has been granted.
Mr. President, while we're in this, Penta will take reconsideration if it will.
Immediate reconsideration in the hopes that it will not prevail. All in favor, all opposed? So moved. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the application of National Grid for a permit to, for a permit for the installation of conduits on Dick Street.
We'll take a two-minute recess. Okay, we'll bring this meeting back to order. This is the Revere City Council meeting of April 28, 2014. We had that little brief recess. Now we're back in order and I think we have a motion on the floor to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed? So moved. We'll take up calendar item number 17, please.
Communication from Veteran Services relative to the installation of a memorial pole for Sergeant William A. Johnson, Jr., Green Beret, at the corner of Bennington Street and Yundi Avenue.
Mr. O'Hara, you want to speak on this?
The folks at home can hear.
Oh, the folks at home. All right, thank you.
Do you speak directly into the mic, please?
All right, they will. Thank you very much. In regards to erecting a memorial pole in Beechmont Square, in order to recognize Trooper Billy Johnson's Vietnam War record and make public his being recognized as being selected as Trooper of the Year, an honor very few get on the state police. His war record speaks for itself. Trooper Johnson is no longer with us and he would be the first not to be recognized for his endeavors. I ask all of you to vote in favor of this request. I would like to thank Nick Boer, Veterans Affairs, for the research on behalf of Trooper Johnson. The city of Revere is very lucky to have Nick looking out for our veterans. Also, I would ask the city council to attempt to locate Billy's sisters so that they might be present at the dedication if in fact you vote for this request. And I thank you all for the consideration on behalf of Billy. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Thank you, sir. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the application of National Grid for a permit to install conduits on Dick Street.
Dan?
Dan Cameron, National Grid office at 170 Metford Street, Malden. I just made a phone call and found out that the person who normally come here is, she's on her way, but I can handle this. This has to do with a sewer pump station that we need to feed and it's, there's an existing pole and we need to run some conduits from that pole over to the new electric service for the pump station. And it's obviously in a public way, which is why we're here.
This is going to be very easy because we need to get this approved. So Counselor Patch, you want to say anything on this? Oh, sorry, it's public hearing. All right, any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this situation is on Dick Street and they've been having sewerage issues down there for many years and in order to feed the pump station that they're going to install, we're going to need the power. And the nearest pole is down on the north side of Dick Street, I believe, and they have to run underground conduit to that location. So the people need some relief down there. You know, I thank the superintendent and the city planner and the engineer for putting their work together to make this happen at this point. So I hope everybody votes for it and if we can push it through tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Genino.
Thank you. I want to see issues like this addressed, but I would like to say that at this point I will not be voting for any special permits for National Grid until some of the existing roadwork is fixed in some of the areas that have been worked on recently. There's been a lot of work done in Ward 6. The roads are still pretty bad. They're torn up. The trenches are sinking. It was just not patched or filled correctly. Augusta Street semester, we rode Sagurny Street. There are some spots on Malden Street. And until the contracting is done and the work is done thoroughly, so we're not having these problems on the streets, because these are all areas that were just paved, you know, we don't want to end up with more Washington Aves in the city and we all know how bad that road is. So I will not be voting on any of the special permits until the current roadwork is addressed in some of those areas because they're really bad and they need to pay a little more attention on how they fill and how they pave when they patch because I know on my street in particular, the sidewalk was cracked, the fill is sinking, and it's just really bad. And we're spending all this time and money repairing our roads so they are better and these are freshly paved roads getting torn up a year later. So thank you and I hope the issues do get fixed and I hope that these issues are addressed as well.
Thank you, Counselor Genino. Counselor Novosolsky wants to rebut something.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to Counselor Genino, in this particular case, you know, I would appreciate you go ahead with this one. Most of the other ones are when they change lines, when they put the new lines in, but this is for the residents that live down there who are getting sewer backups. And I'm sure you wouldn't want to be one of those people that live there and have sewerage backing up into your basement. So I would hope that you reconsider on this one anyways. But on the other ones, it's main lines that they're digging up or feeding someone's new line going into the house when they convert or something. But I would hope you'd not, you know, take these particular folks down on Dick Street. They're on a dead end, you know, they're voters and I know they've called me and they want this thing done and hopefully we can get unanimous vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll hold this until we have the second public hearing and then we'll vote on both of these at the same time.
Mr. President, with all due respect...
Okay.
Oh, you know, okay, you want to do them both at the same time tonight? I'm sorry.
Is that all right? Okay. Madam Clerk. Thanks for quieting that noise down outside.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the application of National Grid for a permit to install conduits on North Marshall Street for the purpose of providing electricity to the city of Revere pump station.
Dan?
Excuse me.
Proponents, I'm sorry. Proponents.
I just received this on my phone. I'm hoping it's not advertising correctly, but we show it as Marshview Terrace. Yeah, that's where we show it coming off a transformer that's going down, looks like near, in the middle of the cul-de-sac? I'm sorry. Yeah, Marshfield was, just got submitted. This one here is for North Marshall. It is for conduits for a pump station as well.
Okay. That all you need?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other proponents, people in favor of this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to...
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to request that Counselor Janino, I know where she's coming from. We've both been fighting since forever for me, and since she's been on the council, she's also had the same calls that I'm getting up in my ward that all the work that I'm that you're mostly most of the work done by your outbid construction companies, they just do a lousy job filling in the holes. And I've had I don't know how many motions in to have them dug up, and my fellow counselors also have similar problems, that they just sink, and people are getting their cars bottomed out. And one street she didn't mention is Sarden Street, the big job you did on Sarden Street along the school. It's a it's just a it's just a mess. And I can see where her anger is coming from. And I but this this here is finally in North Revere, we're getting new we're getting all the pump stations up in North Revere, which is a big, I think, a big thing, redone with new pumps. And and it's just going to help the the whole area there as far as their sewerage and what have you. So I would say that I hope my colleagues vote for this tonight, and that it's important to get this done as soon as possible. And I hope you work along with Superintendent Goodwin. And I know you've you're going to discuss it with him tomorrow when about the the previous problem I mentioned earlier with the other two pump stations that are being redone.
Yeah.
So I think if we all that as far as you've got to understand, I know it's hard to go back and redo something, but I don't even know if you've got a budget for that. But it's it's got to be done. I mean, we have streets, we go out, you don't know what we have to do to get our streets redone. And and when we do get them redone, then two weeks later, National Grid will come down and they'll put a line all the way down the 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 street. And, you know, there's got to be some coordination, some effort to to work with the city on if you're going to do a big project like that, to let the superintendent know our community actually Frank Strangie up Strangie up in community planning know that you have plans on putting in a new main, a gas main, just so that, you know, we can wait till after you finish your work, and then then we'll we can pave the street. It doesn't seem to be that difficult of a situation. But again, I just hope that this is a totally different subject that from the roadwork. And I just hope that it passes tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Janino?
Thank you. Out of the respect to the ward counselors and the residents in those areas, and because and only because these are emergency situations that will improve the quality of life, even if they do end up with awful trenches, I will support them for this evening, but going forward, I will not. To Counselor Patch's point about having a budget to fix it, if it's done right the first time, there shouldn't be a budget to fix it. So we need to pay more attention to the quality work on these roads. It's really, 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 really poor. And we have our own DPW going out with their one little truck filling out potholes as much and as fast as they can, and it's just adding to the problem. And I have complaints about tires being damaged and alignments to their cars and all this really expensive damage being done to people's cars, especially when lines are being put in streets. You know, this is right in people's driveway. So when they back and pull out of their driveways, they're hitting it every single day. So I hope that this is addressed. I hope that the contractors aren't notified, because we are aware of it and we're not happy with it. And only out of respect for the residents and of the ward counselors, I'd be supporting these two emergency issues. But going forward, I won't support any new work until the old work is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also will support the ward counselor and Counselor Janino on this. I had put in a motion about a year ago, a year and a half ago, that when we have street openings in the city, and there are many, that somebody should be making sure that those are filled with the proper material, compacted to the proper ratio, and then sealed. Because if they're not sealed, you have nothing but you get rain in the winter and the water going in, and it causes them causes more problems with them. I've got one on North Shore Road that runs from the lights in Oak Island Street, probably about 50 feet north. It's like it's like a little gully now, and it was it was all trenched out, and it was trenched out for good reason, so you give the people better service down there. I understand that. But the contractors, they're not adhering to the logic of refilling these trenches properly and resealing them properly. And I would ask you to bring that back to your division manager, whoever is responsible for hiring these contractors, for assigning this work, and make sure that they are, because it's it's crazy. Counselor Patch is 100% right. We put in new streets in the city, and then a year later, two years later, somebody needs a utility fixed, and they come in, they dig it up, and they're not being compacted and they're not being sealed properly. And that's and I would hope that that would change. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Penta?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. One, there is a city ordinance on the books now that the community planning development know usually two or three years before streets get done, and they notify all these outside companies, the gas, electric, and all this stuff, that we are going to be doing in 2016. Road A, do you have any major work you're going to do? And if they're not following through on that, shame on them. But the other thing, as far as their budget's concerned, we're their budget. The rate pay is their budget. They get an unlimited budget, because whatever they want to spend, they're going to go spend. They're going to pass along to everybody that's paying electric bill. So the thing is, and I give the mayor and this council, it was because this council put in that we needed someone watching over this. The mayor did hire someone to watch these compactions and stuff like that, I believe, in the past month or so. And I actually seen him out there today with a shovel looking at one of the things. So I think hopefully it's going to get better, because this has been going on for too long that, you know, the shabby workers is that we're paying for it twice. We're paying for it to get done to the rates, and then we're paying for it over our cards and everything else, getting warrant to it. And then you if we make you do it again, we're going to pay for the third time. So I think if we all get on the same page and do it correct the first time, we'll be better off. But I know community development does send out to all utility companies when they're doing a new road to let them know firsthand that you have two years to complete whatever major work you have there. And I'm sure you get those communications. But with that being said, hopefully things will get better with the new person checking these compactions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I agree with everybody, what they said, but in a defense of a little of National Grid, I've had I've had two two streets that had major new pipelining done, you know, by National Grid, new gas gas line pipes. And one was on Shirley Ave. If everybody goes down Shirley Ave, you see one side of the street that has been repaved. They actually we we empowered onto them that they had to come back and do something. They came back and they scarified the whole side of the street, the full length of their work, came in and repaved it. As a matter of fact, I believe Deveraux did the work even coming in to finalize it. And it came out, and then they did the same thing down on Standish Road, where they ran a whole new line down there. And Standish Road was not is not the best street in the world. And now half the street is perfect, and now the half of the street is not. But everybody wants to drive on one side of the street. They want you to come down and do another line on the other side of the street so you can repave that. But, you know, in some cases, it comes out good. In some cases, when they just leave that small, you know, two-foot, 24-inch trench, it breaks down a lot quicker than normal. But when they came back and did their scarifying, it came out terrific. So with that portion of it, I thank them for doing that, and hopefully they do a lot more around the city. I know it is extra money, but, you know, but you hear what's going to be going on there. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Nowosowski. Counselor Guanasso?
It's my understanding that the utilities can pull a do the work without pulling a permit. And as the private sector goes forward and works in our community, don't they require a performance bond? And so what I'm suggesting is that, and I know we brought this up before, that we can't place this levy upon the utilities, but some sort of satisfaction has to be given to the community. I mean, we just can't sit here at odds and say, well, they don't do this, they won't allow that. How do we all know this? Can't we just bring it to some head, to some body, and collectively get together and see what our rights are in reference to public openings on sidewalks sidewalks and streets? Because just look around, and it's to add insult to injury with a very nasty winter, with all the plowing that was required, it just adds to our the burden of the type of effort that we have to do each and every spring. This isn't a first-time event. This is every spring we reach the same situation. And the people of our community have been tolerant to this point, but there are a lot of people within our our community that are outraged, and they say, why aren't we doing something about this? And we talk about it so frequently. But I think we've got to get to some sort of sense of where do we place the responsibility, and how do we financially go forward with that responsibility? It's easy to say, we'll fix it, but who's going to pay for it? You know, you need money to make these repairs. So we have to to get together with and maybe have a meeting with the utilities and invite them all in and meet with the legislators, have them come here also, to discuss how we can get this thing paid for, and how what type of responsibility lies within the utilities. Hopefully it'll go forward, Mr. President, with your great effort.
Thank you, Counselor. What's that?
Still in the air.
We're still in the public hearing? No, we closed that side. We yeah, we're going to vote on them yet, but we're not finished yet. I got to have a couple minutes, if that's okay. Unfortunately, to Counselor Guanasso's point, we're we're under restrictions with utilities, and that they 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 get away with murder. However, their own rules, I know that National Grid has a compaction requirement, and I believe it's 90 and 95% compaction, and somebody's not following your rules if we're ending up with these kind of trenches. So I think on your end, there's got to be some more scrutiny. I know you've got a lot of different contractors. Deveraux is one, and you've got several others, but somebody has to be skimping on the compaction. I did a lot of roadwork, and I know that, you know, sometimes we're in a hurry, and that that that's the one end that gets compromised. And whenever the whenever the compaction gets compromised, the roadway gets compromised, and we end up with these. So I don't know who you bring that to. You bring it to the people that are hiring the contractors, have a have a powwow with them and say, this can't be going so far wrong if we're following our own rules for compaction. You can't be. There's got there's a breakdown somewhere. And without pointing fingers, I would ask you to bring it back to the powers that be and say, let's put some pressure on the contractors to be more, you know, diligent with the compaction. Stay to your point, Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I want to make two points. As far as the idea of doing putting the mains in before the streets are done, I'll just bring up for an example, my neighborhood off aside the street, Johnny Road, Wentworth, Camille, Wasanta, Joey, and then you got Roland and Randall, and you have Festa. When those houses were built, there was no gas put in on these streets. And all these streets have haven't been done. I mean, my street, in another two years, you're going to have to do the street with a lawnmower, because of there's so many cracks and grass growing through it, that you'll be out there with a lawnmower. But anyways, and I'm telling you right now, the people are crying for gas. And if you had any, if you want to make money, you should put these lines in now before these streets are are going to be done. And I guarantee you'll get a 90% hookup, or 80, 90% hookup on those streets. And as far as he made a good point on the on the Mr. President, the president made a good point on the compact. Now, I it's been seven years since I've worked details with the utilities. And and as far as your National Grid, they do an excellent job, your people, when they do when they dig a hole and do and do the work. They do. They do a good job. The contractors, they're they're a little bit of a hurry. They do it a little. They have to do a little, you know, a little more work, and and they and they cut corners. And but you do have a guy. I know you have a supervisor that supervises these people. Only a request that you have that person be there at the end, when they finish a job, to to be there, to make just make sure that they they do it right. And I mean, and I and I know for a fact that sometimes it's not, he's not there. So they just do it as fast as they can and get out of there. So it's just a simple request, you know. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Okay, so now it comes time that we are going to we're going to vote on these two proposals. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve the petitions of National Grid to install conduits on Dick Street and North Marshall Street for the purpose of providing electricity to city of Revere pump stations? Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The petitions have been granted.
Thank you, Dan. Good job. You you might be maybe you can double and get the other job, too. Double pay.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered upon the application of new singular wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T for the for a permit to modify an existing wireless facility by adding three panel antennas and additional network upgrades at premises located at 427 Squire Road in Revere.
Proponents, name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Green with Terrace Search, 157 Riverside Drive, Norwell, Massachusetts, 02061, here representing AT&amp;T.
Tell us what you want to do and.
Thank you. AT&amp;T has an existing facility at 427 Squire Road, which is the Four Point Sheridan Hotel. That installation's been there for probably 12, maybe 13 years. It has been special permits last for upgrades in 2005, and then in 2011, we're here to make another upgrade on it. And per your bylaw, any upgrades are requiring a special permit. AT&amp;T is in going in part nationwide, network upgrades, which all of the sites are being upgraded. So probably in about a month or two, we have another site on Morris Street that'll be in front of you, asking for the same type of relief. Basically, these are the LTE 4G high-speed data upgrades, so people can use their phones quicker and allow more capacity for people to use their phones. Basically, it involves taking down most of the antennas, three of them will stay, adding new antennas. There would actually be an increase of three antennas at the end of the day, and adding associated electronics equipment that remote radio heads and surge arrestors and other things that protect the equipment. That's pretty much it. I can answer individual questions if you'd like.
We'll go through the hearing, and then we'll do that.
Fair enough.
Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing them will close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing them will close that side of the hearing. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question. So, there exist in wireless facilities right now, you're going to add three new antennas?
Correct. The installation has gone up and down with antennas as technology has changed over the years, and it currently has nine panel antennas right now, and it'll go to 12. I believe it had 12 when it was originally built, then went to nine, to six, back to nine, to 12. It's not specific to this installation. All of the sites across the country are going to 12 antennas.
What was the reason for the fluctuation?
It's just a different, it primarily has to do with frequencies, and as time has gone on, the amount of users and the amount of data, more frequencies are being used, and those frequencies require different antennas. That's pretty much, you know, that's pretty much the gist of it.
So, since they exist in structures, you're not going to have to build on anything or need a detail? You're not going to have to erect another pole or any towers?
No. No, usually the way that this one sets up is where there's one antenna now, it's going to come down. Well, the antennas will be replaced, there's one there now, and under tab five, there's some before and after photos, we put two pretty much side by side. And they're roughly the same size as the ones that are up there now.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, my fellow counsel handled most of the questions I had, but you're not taking up any more space up there than that's already there?
No, no, we're within our least area.
There is a shelter built around these antennas?
These antennas that this installation, they're facade-mounted on the side of the hotel currently.
Would you have...
Sorry, go ahead.
How many more companies, how many antennas are up there now? Do you have any idea?
I believe when I was looking, I believe there's three carriers that currently use it. I don't know which ones they are, unless it's on the plans and they're called out. But, you know, as long as they're, you know, within 10 to 12 feet away from each other, you're not going to have any interference issues, and it's not uncommon for multiple carriers to use a single building.
And there's no health issue?
No. No, particularly when they're facade-mounted, because you can't get to the antennas, you'd have to go get a boom truck and hang in front of them.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this is a special permit, so we can't vote on this tonight. This will go to the zoning subcommittee, and it'll be voted out probably at the next council meeting.
Okay, is it next month?
You'll be notified when the next meeting was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning.
Calendar item number seven, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Mr. President. Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had the following individuals before us. First was the appointment of Ms. Elizabeth Dixon, 54 Wade Park, Riviere, to the Election Commission, and that was voted out favorably by the subcommittee. And the next was the reappointment of Paul Pizzano, who now lives and resides in Riviere as a harbor master for a three-year term, and that also was voted out favorably. The other two appointments, the reappointment of Thomas Sabati, 106 Squire Road, as an assistant harbor master, and GeoSearch, Inc., as a licensed drain layer, did not appear, and we asked that the city clerk send them one more notification for our next meeting. If they don't attend, then we will drop their name from the eligible listing. I asked the council to hold vote favorably for the two that did appear, and we hopefully confirm them this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Pursuant to Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following items are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number eight, motion of Counselor Zambudo relative to the City Council Office Supplies account.
That was remain in Ways and Means.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to ETP funding requests.
Mr. President.
Counselor Novoselsky.
President, we never acted on this.
What's that?
I can't believe we haven't acted on this. Here's an ETP fund.
Yeah, no, it's...
It's not, it's not out, you know, it's money that came in from...
Yeah, it's time to be acted on. That's why it's on the table here.
Well, it's been sitting for, what, three months?
Well, our chairman was, our chairman was ill.
Okay.
So, if it's all right with the Ways and Means chairman, can we vote on this tonight?
No problem at all.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
So, I guess we'll take up the ETP funds. I was going to say EBT, but EPT. We don't want to get into that. This will be a real call.
Shall the City Council approve $60,784.39 from the ET, I'm sorry, Education Telecommunications Program account to various other accounts within the City of Riviere? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to a fraud, waste, and abuse policy.
Mr. President, I think we ought to put this back in committee. I think this is an important thing that we have to keep an eye on.
Ways and Means, is that what it is? Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 11, communication from Attorney Cipuleta requesting an amendment to PUD application of 29 Therav.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Menino Construction Company, Inc., as a licensed drain layer. Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of J.J. O'Brien &amp; Sons as a licensed drain layer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor declaring the week of May 6 through 12, 2014, as National Nurses Week.
All in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number 15, communication from Veteran Services relative to the installation of a memorial pole for Anthony Shenna Jr., T. Sergeant Five, at the corner of Newman and Malden Streets.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I share this street with my Ward Three counselor, but this is on my side. I had, I've been working with the family, with Nick, and we're at this stage right now, and I hope it goes forward tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso, you have anything to say on this?
I love sharing this area with my dear friend from Ward Six, and I absolutely am in favor of this proposal.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the Department of Planning and Community Development relative to the approval of a resolution relative to improvements for Louis Pastor Playground and the Salvo Park Playground.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sean Farrell Excavating, Inc., 53 Gilbert Street, Quincy, Mass., as a licensed drain layer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 19, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of C.R.L., Inc., 33 A Mystic Ave, Medford, as a licensed drain layer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to conduct a public hearing to amend Schedule 4 of Title 10, Isolated Stop Signs, to provide for a stop sign at the intersection of Shirley Ave and Walnut Ave for eastbound traffic.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there is a traffic light at that location, but it's a pedestrian light only, and I had appeared before the Traffic Commission several years ago requesting a stop sign, and since then, when someone came barreling down the street, took a left onto Walnut Ave to go down to Beet Street, hit a 10-year-old kid and broke her leg. So, I think it's time that, you know, by the request of the neighbors, that we ask for the stop sign to be put in there. And I know people sometime don't stop at them, but at least there's something there for a cop to stop someone from making a violation if it happens. So, this is an important issue to myself and to a lot of the neighbors, so I hope it's approved. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by, oh, this is for Counselor Haas. Do you want to...
Mr. President.
We'll table Counselor Haas's motions.
I was going to request, Counselor Haas has three motions before us this evening. He will be at our next regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll table all three motions of Counselor Haas.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to convene a meeting for the purpose of discussing traffic flow on Shawmit Street.
Counselor Powers speaks for himself, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the state delegation to appropriate funds in the next budget for a plaque at the Romney Marsh Burial Grounds indicating its induction into the National Register of Historic Places on February 11, 2004.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, many times, not only is it a national register, but it's also a Massachusetts historical site, and in many occasions, they provide money to the Massachusetts Historical Commission to put items like this in. It's around a $1,500 item. So, we're requesting to see if the state will help us out and put in this monument when we put it in down at Romney Marsh Burial Grounds. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Penta that the City Council, in accordance with Section 5.04.090 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Riviere, revoke the special permit C. 1402 for 765 Riviere Beach Parkway granted on March 24, 2014, for failure to comply with the conditions set forth.
Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I think we all remember when they came in front of us to expand their business. I had reservations then. Against my better judgment, we put conditions on them, and the very next day, up until today, they've broken several of them. I mean, there's vans, cars, every day, and there's a caravan of them, especially if you go down 8:30 in the morning, it's horrendous. But that's a slap not only in our face, to residents of that neighborhood. Second, I just got a call Thursday morning with another condition about not picking up the dumpster, which is a problem I had before, which was corrected for months. Just Thursday, they were there at 5:30 in the morning picking up a dumpster, woke up the neighborhood. So, it's not just one of them doing. And, you know, we gave them a six-month power period, but, I mean, to do this every day since this motion was passed, it's actually legitimately a slap in our face. And I'm going to ask this council to revoke their license. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Guanasso.
Hooray, Counselor. I applaud your efforts, and I certainly sympathize with the, what you're going through. These individuals appeared before us, not on one, but two, or three, or four occasions, and each and every time that they appeared before us, they had a belligerent approach about themselves, and they really were faulting the next guy who was never there, or another person who was not in the room, or waiting for someone to come from another state, never addressing the issues at hand for those poor residents that came faithfully to air their complaints and concerns, and the many other neighbors who didn't have the opportunity to be here, and fearful of some sort of retaliation. This particular organization has a complete lack and disrespect for our community. There's no, and our citizens, and I am all for revocation. If we have to go to the courts to the highest level, we should. We should voice our concern for our citizens, stand up tall for them, and not tolerate this type of behavior. It's as simple a fact, and I don't know how else to express my feelings about this. I will go and testify. I'll be glad to go and testify before the courts to make certain that they don't do business in our city anymore. And to add the biggest insult to all, each and every one of us, and all our citizens in our city are paying for the efforts at that location because they get all their clients from Carmel to Massachusetts, and we pay our state taxes to have this unwanted business in our community. It's an insult to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had serious doubts when they came before the council the last time. Belligerent, arrogance, not willing to answer some of the questions that were asked. I sympathize with the neighborhood down there. If there's a problem in the neighborhood, I think we have to address it, and I think Counselor Penta on this is 100 percent right, and I will support the neighborhood and the Ward Counselor by voting to suspend the license that we've granted to them out of good faith that they've neglected to operate in good faith. So, I will certainly vote to suspend that license, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have no problem with, you know, going on behalf of the Ward Counselor and the other counselors, but I want to make sure we're on solid grounds. And I know we're going to have to have public hearings on it, which you're going to mention, but I think we ought to make sure that the city solicitor is involved in this, and that we give him a heads up.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novoselsky. We, although I would love to just revoke this special permit tonight, unfortunately, by law, we cannot do that, but we do have to have a hearing in, I believe, 30 days or within 30 days...
No, we still have the order. There was no time to...
Okay, so, we're going to have a hearing on the 19th of this month, and at that time, hopefully, we can go forward to revoke or whatever. So, until the 19th.
Mr. President, just a point of information.
State your point, Counselor.
What they came in front of us for the last time was an expansion of their business, and we put a condition on there that we did not give them a license that night just to go ahead and do it. We gave them a license as long as they applied with all the things we put on there. They broke their own license permit by not following the thing. So, you can get all the lawyers involved you want. This council has the right to do it. Thank you.
I agree, but we have to follow the procedures to do it, but we will get it done. Thank you.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Penta that the mayor request CDM to provide the City Council with a list of all work that has been completed, all work that is still outstanding, and total amount of money appropriated to each of these projects.
Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, the reason I put this in is we all know about the order under from the federal courts to get the infrastructure straightened out, but we've appropriated millions of dollars so far. Company started four years ago. We're there four million's been spent, I don't know, we just spent, I don't know how much on this last project, but that was a separate appropriation, over and above. The subpumps, for example, which tonight I got handed, they, you know, got 50 subpumps supposedly, we funded for 400 that we thought were in the city. But I'd like to know where they're at with these different projects that they've already started, how much they've spent, invested into it, before they come back, this council asks for more money for other projects. I just want to get ahead of this, because this is probably the biggest thing facing this community, is the water and this descent decrease. I want to stay on top of this on even a monthly basis to get whatever work is done, not done, what their priorities are, because this list could go on, you know, who knows? They could come up and spend 3, 400 million dollars before we know it and bat an eyelash. So, I was just like, you know, and I wasn't going to cry over spilled milk and winter bath. I could have, because I wasn't happy with it, and that pipe was fixed. He told me the next day, still dirt and mud out there, kids going, you know, unfortunately, it did rain, the kids can't play there right now, but if they could have, they would have been tracking through mud and everything else. I'm definitely not happy with that project, how long it took, what it took, and all, and here's a perfect example. They asked for so much funds for that project. They ran it to some... They ran into some problems they never thought they'd run into, even two weeks before they were up here. They should have known everything they were going to run into. Now they're trying to tell me to run the budget. Something was wrong, because they spent a lot more money than they thought they had to. So, their anticipation or their estimates are pretty far off. And I think sometimes maybe we should get a second opinion from another company. I mean, we're given an open check to someone, and they could be the greatest in the country. But we're the watchdogs of the city, and I think we have to watch over all this work, all this money before we sync with this money. So, that's why I'm asking this council to go along with this, and we'll hash this out in a Ways and Means committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think that it's a good motion, and it's always good to have an accounting. Maybe we can have a monthly progress report on what was spent, what was done, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure you can work out that structure in your Ways and Means committee. So, on the motion, councillor Rigo? No? Okay, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by councillor Powers that the mayor make additional resources available to the Department of Public Works as soon as possible to deal with the pothole situation and unpaved trenches throughout the city.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've received calls from just about every area in the ward I represent regarding trenches and potholes that have just not been done. And, you know, in fact, tonight I got a call from a fellow that invested several million dollars down at the Bell Circle when he redid that whole area down there, put in all the shops. He's getting complaints from the Registry of Motor Vehicles regarding Everett Street, the potholes there. I went into one myself. I think it had to be eight, nine inches deep. But they're all over the city. I've got a trench on Bateman Avenue that's been sitting there, and almost in the middle of the street with two cones and a pile of dirt on it for a couple of months now. I don't know what to tell these people anymore. I really don't. And I know that the Department of Public Works, Donnie Goodwin and his men down there are out straight. They're working. They're trying to get these potholes filled. But apparently, they don't have the resources manpower-wise, or even maybe material-wise, to get it done. So, I would ask that money be appropriated, and if we have to, if we have to bring in maybe Caruso Construction or someone to get out there and address some of these, I think it's something that has to be done. And when they address these, they have to be cut out properly and refilled properly, not just throw some hot patch in it and the cars pick it up and it's back the same way the next week. I spoke to George Anzoni today. We've got $6 million in the rainy day accounts. I can't for the life of me understand why we can't use some of that money to address this problem. We're going to wind up with more people going into these potholes, filing lawsuits against the city, and it could cost us more in the long run to address this. And not only that, they're dangerous. Somebody driving a car goes into a pothole, they lose control, it's an accident. You know, when are we going to deal with this? We're going into May this week. This should be, I realize we had a bad winter, we had a lot of water breaks, but let's give the department the resources they need to address this. So, I would ask that the mayor sit down with the superintendent this week, this week, and find out what we need to address this, maybe get Caruso Construction in, and let's get the damn things filled so that the people in this city can have some comfort when they drive down their street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Penta.
Mr. President, I may have, could have probably saved councillor Powers a couple paragraphs there, but just today, I was with the superintendent, the state has given the city, I believe it's $111,000, $117,000 to do just that, potholes and trenches that aren't done. And I know Donnie just got a list today of 28 trenches that are overdue to get done. I know he's actually meeting with some of his different departments, and DPW even work overtime Saturdays, Sundays, and night times to get it done, and possibly even if they can't do it on their schedule, to go to outside contractors. So, I think exactly what councillor Powers said, and I agree with her wholly, that, you know, it's long overdue. Thank God, I mean, the state, I guess, has given a lot of money throughout the whole state, but we got $111,000. That should go a long way, hopefully, and, you know, hopefully see a big difference. And, you know, I seen the pothole crew out there this morning, today, and I'm sure they're going to be working seven days a week, so, and maybe two, three different departments there, but that's good news for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Penta. Councillor Janino?
Thank you. Councillor Penta took the words right out of my mouth. What I was going to say was on April 9, the governor came up with the Pothole and Winter Recovery Program, and he allocated $300 million to the entire state. So, I'm glad we got a piece of that, because my point was going to be, you know, this happened, how do we get a piece of it? So, I'm glad to see that we did. This is a huge issue, and if there's one thing that I get calls and texts and emails about every single day is, you know, Jess, there's a pothole here, there's a pothole there. Another program too, if you have an iPhone, you can download the See Click Fix app, and you can report the potholes immediately, which I think I pull over all the time, and I'm like, okay, right here. And you can literally use the GPS in the app, and it will pinpoint exactly where you are and send it directly to the mayor's office and to the DPW. And they're very, very efficient. You can attach a photograph of the pothole, and it comes directly in, and it's a very, very, very efficient way to keep a running list of all of them. I know personally, I hit several every day. I've already went through two sets of rims this winter, so I'm looking forward to getting them all fixed. Thank you.
Want to restate that app again, please?
Yes, it's called See Click Fix.
Thank you very much. Councillor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm not going to belabor the point, but this has been an issue, obviously. The nicer weather, some of the potholes have been disastrous. To councillor Janino's point, I'm glad she brought up See Click Fix, is that we actually get a report every month emailed to us, and I had, I had put in a pothole in, on like March 20. Still hasn't been done, but unfortunately, when we got the See Click Fix report, it actually showed that there were no reports in the area that I had made a report. So, I did talk to the mayor's office about it, and I hope that it's something that gets fixed. I have heard some mixed reviews about See Click Fix as like an app to help, to help residents and to make sure that people are getting their services, but that is, you know, a pothole that has, it's been over five weeks since I've, you know, since I've reported it, and I think it was a couple of weeks that it had been, it had been already there. So, I do want to make sure that we, we have the right app, number one, and that at the end of the day, the reporting of that application is actually accurate. I think that's probably much more important than, than really anything else, to make sure that what, what people are reporting is actually getting done, because I don't, I don't think that's the case right now, and I just want to make sure that we do have an ability to accurately track what is getting done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Of course, I hope, I hope the app is accurate, and I hope the reporting and the, and the printouts are correct, because if they're not, then it's a waste of time. But hopefully, we'll, we'll get this on track here. But the good news is, is that, and I was going to say that I had that same conversation with the mayor and the superintendent of Public Works about the money we were getting, and that he had talked about hiring some outside contractors to come in and help. So, hopefully, we're going to do that. So, here we go. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Late motion presented by councillor Powers that the mayor, in the interest of public safety, request DCR to install crosswalks and appropriate signage from the intersection of Delano Avenue and the lineway over to the entrance of Gibson Park.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, several years ago, the city of Revere, in its wisdom, put a playground over in a park over at Gibson Park. The only problem is that kids going over there, they go over there, they ride their bicycles, they go over there to play ball. We need a crosswalk running from the easterly side of the lineway over to the gate, and it may even have to go across the lineway and across the road that services that, the bridge there, because it's a very dangerous situation, and sooner or later, if we don't address it, something is going to happen down there. So, I would like to see DCR to get on and put some crosswalks there, and also some signage to alert the drivers that there is a crosswalk there, and they have to stop